Hi, everyone. Welcome to City and Community Relations Committee. I am the Chair of City and Community Relations, Sarah Robinson. Joining me are Jessica Campbell, Bob Cotton, Liz Boucher, and of course Superintendent Kathleen Murphy, and members of the community we are in. The Old Dame School, which is always fun to say, we're at the community building today just to try and keep things fresh and moving, be on a different side of the city, just for funsies. We'll probably do it again, who knows? Today has only one issue on the agenda. The school district tries to collaborate with the city representatives at least twice a year. So we're working towards an agenda for the first meeting of 2025, which at this point, date's still a little up in the air, but we anticipate it being in the tail end of February. So if we wanted to discuss topics that we want to discuss with the city...
This meeting will be in January. This is just the board and the city council.
Oh, okay, cool. Then I'm wrong. Scrub the tape. All right, so this meeting will be in January?
Yeah, Tom, the city manager, indicated that they would be hosting.
Oh.
We hosted it the last time, if you remember, in June, we did. So it's their turn.
Okay.
And so I expect, I'll probably talk to Tom and get a date for you.
Okay, great.
Be in January.
Awesome.
The one you were talking about in February is the legislative breakfast.
Is the legislative breakfast. I've got so many dates in my brain.
We do invite legislators. We do invite city council. We invite the executive board members, anybody that represents concrete and opportunity to share legislative concerns. It's been a very robust...
It's been a good meeting. I've loved being a part of it.
That's what happened.
We have a lot to talk about this session too.
Do we have a date? Do I have a present?
No, they haven't given us a date.
The date for the February one is like February 20th, and the one for the city, with the city council, they have a committee just like this committee.
Yeah.
I don't have a date yet, Jess. Working on it, okay?
We're flexible. So yeah, opening it up to other members of the committee. Any thoughts? Any preemptive bug? We've missed you. Welcome back.
Thank you. Yeah, I wasn't feeling as well as we.
I'm glad you're feeling better.
Anyway, three things come to mind in no particular order. Memorial Field, obviously.
The elephant in the room.
We've got to decide how to move forward with that, and who's paying what, and what the priorities are. Use of other fields potentially, athletic fields. Depending on how things go with the development of the middle school, there's going to be lots of need for other fields. And frankly, even with the Memorial Field renovation, we're going to have to figure out where...
Where kids are going to play.
The kids are going to play.
We were anticipating that, Bob, so we and Steve Largie, our A.D., and Scott Owen from Runlet, who helps Steve, he's kind of the assistant, they put together a complete list of every kind of activity that we would need field space for, and gave it to the director, Dave Gill, David Gill, to analyze where he could help us with field space. So we may have some information on that, but we're already working on that.
That's good. That's good.
That's huge.
The third one I have is a smaller, but I think in some ways significant issue. You've got this sinkhole over at the high school. That is caused by a broken pipe, a faulty pipe that flows from Bow Brook. It happens to flow through the high school property, but it is not anything special to the high school. The houses up the hill have it, the people across the street have it. So it seems that it's evolving, that it's the school board's problem because it's at the high school. I'm not sure that that's the right answer.
Actually, that kind of triggers me to think, because the reason that pipe failed is because it's from the 1800s, and we have to replace it with concrete.
That's true, but I mean, whose responsibility is to pay for it and to make sure that the rest of that pipe system isn't going to blow out in the next year?
Yeah, that's what I was leaning into is what, like, we're seeing all of these, and something happened at Kristen McCalliff, where they, like, failed all the toilets because just a random pipe burst in the street because it was just decaying. So can we talk to the city about examining, like, underground infrastructure and where it lands sort of in the city improvement plan? What kind of infrastructure, like, issues are they planning on addressing in the coming years that could potentially affect schools? Could, if, you know...
Exactly. And the same thing holds true over at the Broken Ground, I mean, the Runlet site. You know, we've got a stream running through there. Everybody thinks that everything's fine at Runlet. Everything is not fine at Runlet. And we need to know what the infrastructure there looks like and whose problem it is.
Well, you know, last year...
I mean, it's the same wallet. It doesn't matter what entity is charging, it's still taxpayer dollars.
It is, but I mean, for it to become the school board's problem, it's not our main job to deal with sewer and water.
Yeah.
Last year, as you recall, I had to shut down both Runlet and Abbot Downs every day because they have to shut the water off on the south side, and then they also shut the water off on the other end of where Runlet, you know, where the street comes out, because that's where the break was, but they had to shut both sides. So the infrastructure, and again, it was a pipe that was very, very old.
And it's a stream that runs through there.
Right, but we have wetlands. If you recall, we have, at the site on Runlet, back on that parking lot, that first parking lot when you committed that road, just below that, there's a wooded section.
Yep.
Then it goes out to the street, but that's all wetland. So we have to, that's all identified as wetland.
Yeah, yeah.
So we have to be very sensitive to that.
Yeah, of course. So yeah, I think just sort of acknowledging to the city that we're incurring infrastructure failure costs and...
The challenge in them as to whether it's our cost or their cost is my position on it.
Yeah, and what kind of plans do we have, sort of like in their long-term planning? Because like, the roads are theirs, you know, underground infrastructure belongs to the city. But what kind of, like, mitigation plans do they have so that it's not like, oops, we hit a crisis, it's hundreds of millions of dollars now to fix all these things? Are there, like, ways that we can drip into fixing those problems without it becoming like this albatross?
What's their infrastructure plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's important because again, it's not our main mission. We have to take care of our own property. I understand that. It's not our main mission, and that's what we have a city for.
Yeah.
So those are the things that came to mind for me.
Right on. Thank you for bringing them up. I appreciate you.
I have some items separate from the meeting. Can I go there, one?
Please. Yeah.
So the first one is, and I neglected to follow up with it at this month's meeting, but I would like to work on having a monthly board meeting here and work with the group as far as maybe providing childcare for them. I know who's the woman that has, that's working on the program, or Ms. Barb?
Oh, you're thinking of Meredith, yeah.
I'd love to reach out to her, see if she has some volunteers or just working with the community.
Well, you know who else is involved? Is Cara is volunteering for that program.
Oh, okay, so that's, so I believe I have to make a motion for that.
What do you propose?
There is a group, and I forgot what they're called now.
I know the group.
Yeah. I am hoping at least once a year or twice a year to have a board meeting here and provide childcare of some sort, right? So whether people come volunteer, like they do with Meredith's group, or, I mean, I'll have my babysit if I have to. Like, I just like to make it so people can come, bring their kids, participate, and just make it regular. Even, even once a year, start to something, just get that going. I know it's been spoken about for a while, but I think it would be really well received, and it would be cool to try.
Just to remember that you can't have it live. You have to, you know, record it as he's doing tonight, right? And then, great, you get it on the next day. Just know that it's not live, that's all.
Yeah, and we can put that in our communications. If it's once or twice a year, I think that's enough of a heads up for folks to understand. You won't be able to watch it live, but you can be there.
And I remember it's like...
And frankly, it ought to be up at Beaver Meadow once in a while, and, you know.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
It's not just here.
Yeah, Beaver Meadow's a great idea.
That's fine too, even if, like, I'm fine anywhere, and I would love for this to outlive us. And even if it's once a year, every month, everybody knows the school board has a meeting at Broken Ground in February, right? So it doesn't become, right?
Oh, yeah, so it's not like, when are they gonna do it?
Right, even tonight, I'm sure, right? It's not easy to know where to go even for myself. So like, we know, once a year, this is, we just kind of...
I like that, Jess. I like that a lot.
So how do I, do I make a motion? Like, how do I do that?
I think we would need, if a motion...
Make a recommendation.
Yeah.
Is that, thank you. Thank you for teaching me that.
People could make a motion.
Uh-huh, yeah.
But we could, another place to reach out to is the Honor Society for Volunteer Hours.
Ooh.
They'll provide, they'll provide care.
CTE teaches future teachers. They are a resource.
That's such a good idea.
And all those folks are fingerprinted through the school district already?
I love that.
So that's going to be an essential part of anybody that shows up to help watch kiddos is volunteer fingerprinting and stuff like that. We've got, we've got lots of folks that, I mean, I don't...
We are recording this, so Michael Campbell, my husband, we're going to make him volunteer, so he's going to watch it. He doesn't know it yet.
When he's watching tomorrow, he'll know.
Certainly, yeah, any community members could volunteer from the district and get fingerprinted and help with that.
Background check.
Allow for more people to attend.
Yeah, I think that's cool. And, which begs me to ask, do we start providing childcare at the S.A.U.? When we usually do it, because if we're going to offer childcare, I'm just being...
I know.
You know what I mean? Just being a little contrarian, because it's very hard to find volunteers to do anything, even really good things. Because it's hard. People have a lot going on. But at the very least, considering it for our different locations is a must. But let's put that on the back burner and remember that people who attend at the S.A.U. could potentially need childcare as well.
And I'd really like that. When we think about 2025, I'd really like to think about how do we make us more accessible to everybody? And that brings me to, you and I were at the meeting, I mentioned it last time, I'm really, really invested in the newsletter. But I'm willing to try it. I don't know if it's something people will read or if it's worth anything.
I think people would read it, if anything, to criticize. I'm only teasing, I'm only teasing. But yeah, I think, like, my own personal bandwidth, I would probably, just to be completely transparent, I would beg it off. I would maybe contribute one thing a year just between. But we have a lot of really engaged board members who would be very interested in participating in that. Like Barb creates content, like...
That's right.
Yeah, she would very easily create things for a newsletter, no problem. Cara would...
Who's the newsletter goat?
So that was all we had.
Just the parents, I mean, because reporters in the city...
Maybe we just posted, what if we just posted on the website and just advertised that it's there? And if people care about it and they want to read it, we could just put it on the board site?
I think we really, we're getting way off track.
We are.
I think we're, we've got to find a more robust communication system that really gets the people who are not connected to Parent Square or, you know, who don't go to the S.A.U. eight website every week.
I mean, that's the grand question of communications, right? Like, how do you get to the people that aren't paying attention? You're not, they're not paying attention, unfortunately, unless you're meeting them where they're at, and you make it an integral part of something that they bump into, so.
Like an ad that just flashes across the screen.
Or having paper copies at the library.
So that's what they did in the other, I forgot the school district, I believe it was, it could be, you've worked a lot, so I'd like to welcome your thoughts on this. At the last state board meeting that we went to when we voted, the one school district was talking about, they were surprisingly...
Oh, so Jeffrey Ringe, you're talking about?
Jeffrey Ringe, thank you. That the community was really engaged with the newsletter that they do. And I know newsletters sometimes work, sometimes they don't. My hope would be nothing complex, but my thought was maybe once or twice a year to start off, right? Just keep it simple. I don't want to, like, do this big thing and then it can't follow up because it's too much work.
Yeah.
I would love to highlight the kids that we highlighted at the school board meeting for a few months, right? So that'll be one section on it.
Oh, I like that.
One section of the dates and where we're all meeting.
Uh-huh.
Another section with a QR code so people can scan it so they know where their videos are, they know where access are.
So a template could be the same thing over and over and over again, with just rotating easy content.
Content in the middle school, right? So like, here, this is where we're at, new decision, decision, so it's clear right here. Hot, hot, it's just stuff like that. And most of it, I can just grab from what Terry puts on public school. And what Jeffrey Ringe does is they put it at the public libraries, they put it at City Hall, I don't know if City Hall was, but like, they put it in key places that people go to.
Here?
Here, yeah, right, exactly. And again, simple, key pertinent information. I'm not looking to, like, create next topic on there.
Think pieces?
No. Donations needed, right? I love that Runlet was doing, asking for donations for sanitary products for their kit, for the...
Oh, yeah, the red dot lockers.
So stuff like that, where you're like, hey, this is what the school's looking for, stuff like that. And then, what's really important to me is to have a section on it that says, in a couple languages, it can be standard. Every single month, the same verbiage in the very, the top language you spoke in and covered, looking to learn more, right? Reach out to this person, or here's the hotline to try to, at least try, if we get a new person to read it. That's my thought. I don't know if it's too lofty of a thought process, but I love your thoughts.
No, I like it. I think even just to try to start quarterly, see what the feedback is.
Yeah.
Or even if we just try for one.
I know.
Let's try for one first.
I work on two kinds a year, so it could be like...
Then we can, if we find there's energy behind it, yeah, more frequently is fine. I think it's an excellent idea.
I don't.
I think it's one, another way of communicating that can reach people who aren't engaged on social media, who maybe are just in passing, utilizing their city resources.
Hanging out at the cafe, it's like, that's smart.
Why not? So should we bring that up as a recommendation to the full board to have discussion about? Or is that something, because we're sitting in community, we can just kind of start to do?
Well, if you're going to have minutes of this meeting, I'll write them up, send them to you to approve. So that automatically opens up an opportunity for discussion.
Cool.
And I can mark out something, just so...
Yeah, and you know, I think Terry would be a great resource.
Oh, yeah, link up with Terry and have her, because she can have, she can build a template.
She's been doing notes after school board meeting, monthly school board meeting. She takes, she does notes and updates and sends it out to the staff.
Oh, I like that.
That was one of the things that the staff wanted to know of, was what was happening at school board meetings. With some survey that we did. And so she's doing that now. It's at a meeting, she sends it out. You know, we haven't gotten any feedback on it, but...
Hey, no news is good news, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
And that's, like, in...
So we could do the same thing for you. I just have to manage her.
And I don't, let's say, I don't mind owning it, right? Like, this can be a school board-owned communication for us to try to increase engagement and communication.
Yeah, we have the capacity to be able to put it in different languages too, as we send it out.
Yeah, that's awesome. Thank you.
I'll mark, I'll mark something up, and then if we send out one or two and, like, people are not reading it, we can decide then, but we'll see.
Wonderful.
It may be fun to, like, interview a board member, or, you know, spotlight a board member.
Spotlight a staff member in the school.
Spotlight a staff member.
I should say, like, Christmas award, like, these are cool things that are on social. I'd love to just...
Capture all that stuff and put it in a...
Big teacher anniversary.
But it is challenging, and that means we have to have it more regularly. Remember, you have to, like, do it.
If you're going to do one person, you have to do everybody.
That's true. We'll start, we'll start, yeah. We'll start high level broad.
Yeah.
Again, I don't want my kids, I don't want these big, lofty ideas, I can't.
The other, I mean, we've got to find more places to do this kind of stuff. Maybe we ought to talk to Jeff Wells about this. But, you know, there's no reason we couldn't put a link on West Side connects to say, hey, this is the latest newsletter from the school district.
That's true.
What was like, this is...
Huh?
I happen to be one of the admins, actually.
A very popular...
West Side communication page. It's a lot of, like...
It's kind of a local site for people to put all different kinds of things on.
My dog is missing, or, yeah.
Yeah, my dog is missing, or has anybody got a good recommendations for a plumber?
Yeah.
Or in Jeff's case, you know, here's what the school board's doing now, you know?
It's a place where people get information.
That's a really good idea.
I love it.
Yeah, more grassroots, I try to.
Sweet.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Was there any other thought? I mean, I'd love to, actually, I think I can sort of link that back to speaking with the city. And could we ask them what their methods for communicating with the community are? Like, what are the things that they're doing or not doing to be more transparent and receptive?
There comes out of the email, that comes out of Tom's office. No different than what I send out in superintendent's update.
Yeah.
His tends to be a little bit more lengthy.
Yeah.
Terry believes that you need to keep it short and sweet or I'll read it.
Yes.
So you see mine, I'm just a page, and I try to highlight certain things.
Yeah.
But, yeah, they do that. That's what they do.
And then you have to subscribe.
Their website, when you go to their website.
You subscribe to it.
The city manager newsletter, you subscribe to it, so it would have to be something that people can subscribe to.
Oh, like for hours, would we say?
The city manager newsletter, anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, you subscribe to, like, I have to opt in.
You don't automatically do it.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's a little different than what we're proposing.
Well, we actually did that with the middle school project newsletter update. We encourage people to give us their emails so that we can send it out and give them updates on the project.
Even West Side connects, you have to sign up for it.
Yeah.
Have to join it. But...
Thank you so much.
Coming back to talking to the city, the other thing I, in a way, it's kind of like infrastructure too, but the whole issue around traffic studies and, you know, who's doing what and...
What are the cardinal rules for deciding where a study starts and stops?
Well, I mean, there's, there's that part of it, but it's also just like, what are their thoughts on what's going to happen at, on South Street, or what are their thoughts on, you know, what's going to happen at the... I know they're going to redo the corner up there by, what's the name of the restaurant?
Tucker's?
Tucker's.
Oh!
They're going to redo that.
They're redoing McKee Square?
Part of their plan eventually, right?
So they're redoing that, but how's that going to affect potentially the Southend School?
Traffic pattern.
Or, you know, I mean, it's kind of the same thing. What are you guys really thinking about the east side? You know, and for that matter, you know, even Kristen McCalliff or whatever.
Yeah.
I just think we need to have more coordination with what they think is going on in the city versus what...
I know they've been, many have been avoiding it entirely on purpose. Because they don't like divisive conversations. But yeah, it would be nice to get a read on what their mindsets are as the other elected officials in town, like, where are you landing on this?
This is not our problem, but it is their problem.
And I think when asked, they will give us that exact same answer. It's not our problem, that's yours to deal with. But there's no reason we can't ask the question.
You know, we have really good discussions with the city. We meet regularly with Tom and Brian and the assistant, and other people come into the meetings too. So on a pretty regular basis, it is, and I'm just, it isn't the middle school project, although that may come up, there are other issues. So they, you know, I think we just have to make sure that we continue to communicate with them and get the responses. But I feel like they've, they're trying to respond to us, just like today with that bus issue. You know, I called deputy fire chief and he responded right away.
That's wonderful.
Big help to me, because I don't know the logistics of what the issue was.
Yeah.
I, in our appearance to them, I think they are responsive, and we just have to make sure that we articulate it. That's why this meeting is so important. Gives us a chance to articulate the concerns and for them to just respond after us.
Yeah, so do you want to bring up the McKee Square thing?
I'm not going to be there.
Oh, shit, you're not going to be there.
I'm just giving you guys insights.
Oh, I'm going to miss you terribly. It's just like...
It's not against us, it's like...
Aww.
You know, talking about buses, I mean, that's another possible small topic of, you know, we share a motor pool, for lack of a better word. You know, we've been talking about electrifying. I know we've got plans. Do they agree with it?
Good questions.
So, you know, that really is more on us, because we need to update you. Jack has been meeting with the folks over at the comp in preparing for the electric buses, and obviously preparing when they come and having the right chargers and all that. So that's on us a little bit, to make sure that we get the information after Jack. I think the last meeting was with Jack and Matt, I didn't go to that one. And so I think we need to do that.
Yes.
You know.
Jake Burgess is very involved.
We can't have too many topics.
Yeah, because we don't have all day.
Get the big ones.
Yeah, all right. Go ahead, Liz.
So it sounds to me as that city manager and our superintendent may need some time to present to counselors and board members on some of the things that have been discussed, that we are not at those meetings.
Right.
So that we can all be on the same page. Because I felt at the last meeting, city counselors, this is how I felt, that the city counselors also didn't know what was going on. So it makes it, it makes it appear as that the city council is like, oh, what does the school board think? And we're like, what does the city council? But really, there's meetings going on behind closed doors about these topics, and we are not having a say in it, which we're not, we don't need to have a say in all of that. But if we're all updated at the same time, then the council and the board members can't say, oh, they're doing something we don't know about. That we're, we all hear.
I'm with you on that. It felt a little disjointed last time, and I don't think that's anybody's failure by any means. I think it's just we're all so hyper-focused on our own issues that when we open it up to discussion, we all really just want to focus on our issues, and maybe other folks aren't aware of the intricacies of what we're working on because, you know, city counselors aren't in the meetings that you're having with Tom, you know?
And I mean, to Liz's point the last time, I got the impression, maybe wrong, but I got the impression that Tom, Aspel, since we were hosting it, thought like, we're going to do everything in the presentation. Now, maybe this time, he thinks he's going to do the presentations, but I think it's got to be a give and take. It's not, you know, we're here to tell the city council where we're at.
Yeah.
Got it?
Yeah.
Well, one of the areas that I thought was important for the city to understand is our capital improvement plan. So Matt put a lot of effort into that plan, and it kind of gives you a 10-year picture of what we need to do. Take an example, the parking and the traffic on Beaver Meadow was a disaster, right? So obviously, that's something that, in that 10-year plan, we want to be able to present that. So that the city council understands the projects you have on the plate. Last year, Tom presented the projects on his plate, if you're on that. So we'll clean that, we'll tighten that up a little bit.
Great. So what do we, just to trace back, what do we have on the list that we're discussing? We're talking about infrastructure, sort of like Memorial Field?
Yeah, infrastructure, but to be clear, it's not, we're not just talking about middle school infrastructure.
We're talking about citywide, yeah. We have seven schools.
Intertwines with school properties.
Yeah.
Like the pipes.
Right. It's the pipes, man. Infrastructure is not sexy. No one really wants to talk about it because it's expensive and boring. But unfortunately, we have to address it. Is there, are there any topics that you think we're missing, Kathleen, that you think we should be discussing?
No, because I, like I said, I would like to be able to do our capital improvement plan, which is all about infrastructure and Memorial Field and all the things that you mentioned.
Great, yeah, great.
If you recall, right? You was there, you had the facilities?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so I think that's important. They need to have that detail.
Yeah.
The only thing I'd say on that, Kathleen, is I'd kind of limit it to the next two to three years. I don't think we need to do the 10-year plan, because it gets a little lengthy and a little...
Yeah, weedy.
Dry.
And also too, is that many of board members may not sit longer than their term. So they're thinking about just two or three-year term.
Yeah, two or three-year horizon.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Great suggestion.
Great.
I think it is worth, we have time to just ask them what, over the years, what has been worked well and what hasn't worked well in terms of communication with...
That's kind of what I was leaning on. That's... That's kind of what I was leaning on. That's kind of what I was like...
If we have time, if we don't have time, but it may just, maybe they have new ideas that they're looking to do, but they haven't done them yet. Maybe it's something that we could work together and collaborate.
I was saying.
Maybe we send something, maybe they'd be willing to take something, I, I'm...
Spitballing.
Spitballing, something like collaborative newsletter of some sort.
Oh, yeah, why not?
Send a message, school board message to those who are already on the city manager's listserv, you know, I don't know.
I mean, they run elections for us. There's no reason we couldn't use their listserv. It's all taxpayers, it's all information that affects them.
So I...
And you have a great relationship with so many of them. Like, I know Jenny and you, like, they would totally come with the care, we'd come to do that.
Oh, that's cool.
It would be, yeah.
Great. Um, do you want a quick time check here? We're at six o'clock.
Just one more thing.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, what other things?
Tomorrow night, I'll finish the last P T A meeting, so I've been out at all the P T A meetings. And the nice part about it have been, there've been various board members that have joined me at those meetings. And the feedback that we received from those P T A, P T Os, um, was it was really nice to have. I, I love going and sharing, um, but also that they really appreciated seeing a board member there too.
Nice.
That was just another way that, that, you know, maybe you wanted us to get out and do that.
Mm-hmm.
And so tomorrow night's my last one at Millbrook.
Nice. Thanks, Kathleen, for the extra, you know, that's not something that's a part of your job description, but you're more than willing to do it.
It's about communication. So what I did was I go out and I shared the things that are happening, new math program, the working...
Which is working great.
Yeah. And so I was to share those things and I tried to couch it to whatever grade I'm in.
Mm-hmm.
So at the middle school, it was more about middle school stuff and...
Yeah.
Tomorrow night it'll be around, um, early learning, it would, so.
What time is it at tomorrow?
Um, it starts at six.
I'm gonna try.
Yeah, if you're around, I, I, I think I put it in my weekly update. Um, but I do like to do that, to Jack.
So something, something else to piggyback on the P T Os and P T As is that, um, as an active member still on the Kristen McCollum P T O.
Mm-hmm.
And now I'm the, the school board liaison.
Nice.
And so having a school board liaison doesn't have to, does not have to be a school board member, but a school board liaison who's responsible, maybe considering that as a position, who's responsible for viewing, viewing the meeting, whether it be after the fact or attending, and then relaying a summary of that meeting. So every meeting, I relay a summary of the, the monthly board meeting to those in attendance at the P T O meeting. So they don't have to even watch it. They've literally just got highlights of, you know, I felt really good for that month.
That's a really good idea.
Bring or be the represent, I mean, I have a vision that I, um, you know, anyone could be, right? And they could then come to the meeting and represent the P T O.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, give a statement if they wanted to, or they could ask questions.
I mean, there's no reason I couldn't write up like two paragraphs about what we spoke about and send it to the Broken Ground team, you know?
I almost wonder though whether that's not something that Terry will try to put together for, Terry to put together consistently to send out to the P T Os.
Oh, so why would she do for, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just sending the same thing.
I was gonna say, if she sends it to the teachers, like she said it.
Yeah.
Marvelous.
I mean, yes, so that would be a generic thing. I, I think of it as like, if you know the P T O or you have a specific board member who sits there, they can tailor it. Like, obviously, I'm highlighting things specific to CMS.
Yeah.
That I think are important for the CMS families.
Which is different than Broken Ground or Millbrook families.
Different than Broken Ground or Beaver Meadow, yeah. So then you're, that person's able to take those issues to the school board or email us at representing the board.
I think that's really smart, Liz. Um, again, finding volunteers to do things is difficult, but if they're already sitting on the P T O, is that, okay, this is a really good idea. I like it. How would we move forward with, you have a pretty good connection to all the P T Os, right?
I mean, I would just think that if, if it's just talked about and encouraged, you know, like you can talk to your local P T O and you're saying, hey, is there someone who wants to be responsible for attending our meetings? Or, yeah, I need help doing that, how can I help you facilitate that?
Yeah, good call.
So even if the P T O had somebody that agreed to watch the meeting and then do a summary of it.
Exactly.
Convergent.
That relates to, you know, Beaver Meadow and Broken Ground.
Smart. All right, cool. Let's talk about that with our...
They're kind of friends, I mean.
Yeah.
Everyone's on a P T O, whether they attend the monthly meetings or not.
That's true.
So someone could watch it and still send it and not...
And not actually have to leave the comfort of their own home. That's wicked smart.
Childcare, all, yeah, okay.[1769.22]